Okay, good evening. This is the special, a special meeting for the school committee. As chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated are the agenda or can hear me. School members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Alexis Fishbough? Okay.
Nope, here she comes.
Oh, okay. Alexis, Alexis, you hear me?
Takes a minute to get in.
That's okay. I, I, I have a new thing. Now I need to change the word of my echo because now every time I say Alexis's name, it thinks I'm calling it. Um, okay, so I'll move on then. Um, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Yes.
Brian Haas?
Yes.
Charles LeBron? I saw you, Charles. Um, looks like you're muted.
Yes.
Okay, Karen Lindquist?
Yes.
Heath Kenny?
Yes.
Liz York?
Yes.
Okay, and I think Alexis, can you hear me in now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, did I get everyone from staff? Did I say you, Brian? I did say you, right? Okay. All right. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a remote meeting, as allowed by Chapter Two of the Act of 2023, signed into law by Governor Haley on March 29, 2023. This act continues to exempt provisions of the open meeting law regarding remote meetings and public access until March 31, 2025. This committee is convening via Zoom, um, as posted on the district's website. Let's see, that's it. Um, please note that this meeting is being recorded. Accordingly, be aware of, uh, other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by this recording, which is audible to and viewed by a public. If you're planning to record a broadcast, please raise your hand and say so now. Okay, seeing none. Uh, meeting materials are posted in the 2024-2025 agendas under the tab for the school committee and Maynard Public School website. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted materials unless otherwise noted. Uh, we do not have a public comments, um, agenda item for this meeting, so I will skip that section. Before we go to the first item, permit me to cover some ground rules. I'll speak clearly better than I am right now. And after each member speaks, if any members have remarks, I will ask each member if they have comments, questions, or motions they would like to make. I'll go through each member comments for questions if time allows. Hold off speaking until your name is called, and remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the chair and take care not to interrupt. Finally, each vote tonight, um, in this meeting will be conducted via roll call since all members, we are remote before I call this meeting to order. Let me go ahead and, um, at 6:04 via roll call, call the meeting to order. Uh, Mary Branley?
Here.
Mara Hogan?
Here.
Hillary Griffiths?
There.
Alexis Fishbough?
Here.
Natasha Rivera? Yes. Okay, um, urgent business? Superintendent Haas, anything urgent?
No urgent business today, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, handbooks. Um, so I just want to try to approach this. I have 25 minutes dedicated on the agenda for this, and I know we have three handbooks to approve. Um, I probably have a little bit of wiggle room there, but, um, so I think what we're going to do, since we've gone through the high school one, um, already pretty much in depth, and I'd like to really, um, give Liz, you know, back her time since she was two hours with us last week. Um, so I would like to go to the, start off with a high school, um, handbook and, um, Liz, if you could, just in short and sweet, um, way outline, I, I saw that you had updated, um, changes, but if there's anything in particular that you wanted to call out?
Yes, if you'd like to look at page 29, the section on CRA has been completely rewritten. I don't know if people have had a chance to take a look, but we front-loaded it with, we, we really just took all of your advice. We front-loaded it with all of the options that are available when a student is facing chronic attendance problems, uh, encouraging stu-, um, staff and families to reach out to access any of these solutions or more. I, I said non-exhaustive because there are other possibilities. And then a- as we had discussed, um, at the very end said that we would consider a, um, a joint CRA petition to the juvenile court as a last resort when other interventions have been in effect.
Okay, I'm going to just quickly, um, go around the school committee. Um, Hillary, any other thoughts or suggestions?
Um, I really-
On that part?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, um, I really appreciate these edits. Um, I think it presents it in a much better light and more, and it's accurate to what is being done and shows that it's a cooperative process. At some point, I would like to continue to talk about, um, sort of if, when they are, uh, when, if they happen because of a last resort, say that, that outlet wasn't available. Um, like if it, if the people advocating to ban it were successful at banning it, then what would happen and what would the school do? And are those things that we could do now? Um, and then also to further talk about the bias, um, in how it's been ap- applied over the last couple of years. Um, but that's like a big-
Yep.
That's like a much longer term thing, but for now, I really, really appreciate this. This, this makes me feel a lot more comfortable. Um, and then I also did add some comments to the document, um, about the policy numbers.
Yeah, I did see that. I wanted to hold off real quick. I just, this particular one, because I know this was a major sticking point. I just wanted to make sure every committee member was good with this before he moved on. I said, I think the other stuff is more housekeeping, um, and this seemed more substantive. Um, that's okay, Hillary.
Yeah, I just felt bad because I think we, I didn't want Principal York to think that like we were going back now instead of last time, and I feel bad for adding some additional edit of the 22nd.
Um, it's okay. So Alexis, does that, this particular section about the CRA work for you?
It does. It makes me feel a whole lot better, uh, that because it felt very punitive with the short little paragraph that was there now, and it feels, um, like Hillary said, it's a much more cooperative collaborative process, which it was anyways. Uh, but not outlined in the handbook, so I, I am definitely much happier with the way it is written now.
Okay, Mary?
Yeah, no, I totally, I really appreciate your effort, Liz. It really speaks so much more collaboratively. I wanted to actually ask if we could have the same language be at Fowler and at the elementary school because each one of them is a little tweaked, but I thought that this looks really, really good for, for the continuity, um, through the school system. So it's just a, an overall thought.
That's, that's where I was going eventually, Mary, too, is every, if everyone's fine with that, is that Liz, I'd like you to kind of like copy, paste, and send it so we could, because I think that was the comments in the other handbook, so we don't have to, um, you know, just what we had already recommended. Um, yeah, Hillary?
Oh, I, I agree with that, and I definitely would like this part added to the Fowler one. I think reading this to some, in some ways, for regards to Green Meadow, there's the age-appropriate factor, like if a kindergartner, it's, it's really more of a DCF and a 51A issue if a six-year-old is not coming to school, where I, I, I don't know that we want to just blindly copy and paste it if there's ways to make it more age-appropriate for little, little kids.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think it would be more just adding that substance to it where it's, um, just expands on it, but age-appropriate, yes. Um, Morrow, I want to make sure, give you an opportunity. Does, does this section look fine for you?
Yeah, it looks great. Thank you very much, Liz, for all the changes that you made, made to this.
My pleasure. I had great collaborators. Thank you.
Thank you. And so Liz, just going through the rest of, um, where folks put comments, um, it looked like-
I don't think I have access to that.
Okay, okay, so maybe after-
Perhaps someone could share that back with me, because I would love to make those last changes and get this
Yep.
up with your approval.
Yeah, so you're just gonna state what they are. I'm just gonna state what they are, so, oops, sorry.
I granted you access about 15 minutes ago.
Thank you.
I forgot to.
Okay, so just to kind of state what they are to make sure that, because they're, you know, it's written and, um, because we've been working on this, it looks like they're, um, essentially, Liz, more of, um, recodifying naming conventions for policies that have been updated or changed. So we're going away from like the 631 to more of the letter, um, naming conventions that are mask-specific. So I think that's where you'll, you'll have comments in, um, within the margins, um, from Matt. I'm just going to go through, because I just saw on the front page, but I just want to go through each page and make sure, um, I highlighted, so there was one in the beginning. Um, yeah, it looks like Hillary did a great job of, um, putting those comments. Hold on, it looks like we have Alexis on page 25. So Alexis has a comment about, um, Alexis, the college board offers a free-
Yeah, so she was responding, I think, to me, because I was-
Okay.
Right. Yeah, I was responding to Mary, but my question was, even though they get a discount through college board, does the district provide any financial support as well?
Currently not with VHS.
Okay.
Um, so that's something certainly we could talk about for the future.
So maybe we can look at, since these pol-, since these handbooks are going to be on the Policy Subcommittee for, before, um, maybe that could be a conversation piece, and also I'm guessing because it has budget and, um, budget implications, we'll need to assess that as well, but for now-
The good news is that for all mathematics and science VHS APs this year, Massachusetts is paying all the fees.
Great.
Wonderful.
So, um, Alexis and, and Mary, I just want to make sure we, are we keeping the language the way it is for now? Okay, and then, you know, we can monitor, revisit, and circle back to it. Great. Um, just on Hillary's, I see that she's done another, some other, um, JFABD. Um, and then I just wanted to confirm that these are the remaining.
And I just, I had one more, after you're done.
Oh, whoa, 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 here we go. I got to page, scrolling towards the end. I just, um, okay, uh, oh, JFABD again, so this is some more, um, and again, Liz, these are in, just in the margins.
Yep.
Um, so you should be able to find these. Um, Mary, I didn't see if you had another comment somewhere. I'm sorry if I missed it.
No, it was, it was something from all three of them that, um, the, the universal breakfast and, and lunch, I think I put it in Green Meadow because that's the one that, that triggered me, but if we could put somewhere in all three of the handbooks that for the 24-25 school year, that breakfast, um, one free breakfast and one free lunch is, um, you know, available to all the students. Um, I, I would appreciate that, but, because I know we talk about universal breakfast program, but people have to look for it. So, um, if we could just put a comment in there, um, about that, and I wasn't sure where, where it would go, but, and that was for all three schools. Green Meadow sort of alluded to it, but I couldn't find it at Fowler in the high school, so.
Okay, do you, um, is there something quick that we might be able to add there, Liz? That seems like might be the only substantive, uh, piece to add in some, I mean, I think, it sounds like we, I think, Mary, you would trust Liz to-
Oh, gosh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just to have it on there somewhere, um, would, and I'd say just for 24-25, because who knows what next year's going to bring?
Exactly.
Um, but yeah.
Hillary, I see your head up. Oops, sorry.
We actually have lang-, we actually have language already because notifications have been sent out to families because we are actually, um, a CEP district now, which is very similar, and that will be for the next five years.
Okay.
I guess-
So there's language in there then, or?
Not in there. We have sent out other information to parents regarding it.
I'd like to have-
But I have language that I can provide.
Perfect. That would be great. If we could put it in the handbook, I think it'd be great just so people could reference back to it. Thank you.
Awesome. Hillary?
Um, I just wanted, when you were talking about the policy changes, you were saying they were basically just recodified as the letter, um, names instead of the numbers, and I just, I don't want anyone to think that they're the same policy, but with a different naming nomenclature, um, because they actually are different. Like there's, um, the wording is different, so I don't want anyone to think, they don't have to read the new ones because they read the old ones and always changed the name. They actually, the content has changed as well.
So are you saying that those areas where you had the highlighted things that does verbiage that needs to be changed with that?
No, no, I'm just, those, those are fine. Like they just, you know, like whatever the number is, I put the, um, comparable letter thing. It was just because you said, like, and because anyone reads, listens to the meeting and hears like, oh, the names, the protocols were just, policies were just giving-
Sorry, sorry.
The content is also different.
I meant just in relation to how it was worded on the, the handbook, but yes, not the substance of actually the policy. So, okay, good clarification there. Um, so if, um, just that takeaway, so it's just really the substantive change is adding in something about the meals. Colleen will provide that to all the principals for a home and that, and then, um, and then just the, um, edits regarding the policy information, um, that Hillary put in there. So I'll go ahead and, and make a motion that we, um, approve the Maynard High School 2024-2025 handbook, student handbook with edits and authorize Liz York to, um, add the, um, suggested meal, um, program information.
A second?
Okay.
Whatever.
Um, any further discussion? All right, roll call. Morrow?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Liz, oh, Liz, I'm sorry, you're not in the school committee. Uh, Hillary?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yes.
Uh, and Natasha? Yes, all right. Thank you very much.
Thanks again, Liz.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Liz.
Thank you. Sorry to push you in the last week.
Okay. All right, so now we are going to move on to-
Green Meadow might be faster than Fowler if you wanted to-
Okay, sure, let's go on to Green Meadow. So just starting off, and everyone has access. Karen, you, you're in this one, right?
I am. I actually, Colleen gave me access, um, when I logged on, so I want to say thank you all for your comments. Um, personally, I think this is a 57-page document, and, um, I've already reached out to our school council, and I've put a blurb in our staff update looking for people interested in helping with some revision work looking forward to next year. Um, so, you know, hoping that I have your support with that because I feel like this isn't a particularly user-friendly document, and it's not very warm and welcoming if you are just starting in the Maynard Public Schools as a preschool family or a kindergarten family. Um, and I personally really appreciate your feedback about various policies that seemed outdated to me, but, um, we're still present in the handbook even after last year, so that's really helpful. Um, and I also noted your feedback about the font. I did actually try to change the font, and it totally changed the formatting of the entire document, and that felt like a little too much to take on with, you know, uh, school looming. Um, so thank you for that. We'll definitely be working towards the changes. Um, and Mary, I also really like your feedback about making it a little clearer to people. It's not just a universal meal plan, but exactly what that means. Um, so we can definitely include that in the document. And I think the only other thing that was relatively new in this document is that, um, we do have an electronics policy that's listed on page 23. And really, all we're saying is that if students are bringing a cell phone or smartwatch, um, to school along with other devices that had been noted in the past, that we are, we want them in backpacks. So not that they can't have them, but during instructional time, they should be in backpacks, which feels like it's in line with Fowler and, um, the high school in terms of their cell phone policy, but is also developmentally appropriate. Really, it's only a few third graders that might even have a cell phone. Um, and I also recognize that parents like to be able to use, you know, par-, things like parental tracking and sort of know when their, where their child is. Um, I appreciate that, but, you know, it just seems like when they're in their learning mode, they shouldn't be things that are present in their desks or in their pockets.
Okay, thank you for that. So what I would like to do for, um, for us to proceed is, I think it's just separating more substantive pieces that the school committee would really feel need to be updated more immediate and parse, parsing out things that, like, I think font, obviously, I'd rather you not spend an hour on font stuff and have substantive to things not be incorporated. Um, if that's okay with the rest of the school committee, we'll just go through the comments and kind of classify them that way, because we won't, we don't have enough time to be doing, you know, the same in-depth that we did to the high school, so, um, so I think we'll just go through the comments, see if everyone agrees it's more substantive and needed right away, or if it's just something that can be addressed for the next version. Um, is that okay for folks as we go through?
Yeah, I had one, one more bigger comment. The only other thing I wanted to add for this that was more substantive that I didn't get in here, um, was that the high school had the wellness policy, um, Karen, and so maybe just to carry that over to Green Meadow and also to Fowler, though that was those, the high, so just cut and paste from the high school because that, it was pretty succinct, um, for the wellness policy, but yeah.
Great point.
That makes sense to me.
Um, okay, so font, I will say, um, is not substantive, but a nice to have for a next iteration. Um, is that okay with folks?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, and I can't see everyone because I'm kind of scrolling through, so if, just maybe just call out at this point by, if you're like, no, I don't agree. Um, just updating, um, that, and it says updated 2018, Karen, so maybe just look at the footer. I was just noticing that, so, um, because that's, or you just take it out, you know, because it does say 2024-2025 on the actual, um, handbook itself, but on the front page-
Could you just tell me, are you, which page you're on?
The front page, the first page. It says, the footer says updated 9/19/18.
Oh, in the footer. Good catch. Thank you.
Yeah, I just noticed it just now. I didn't even pick it. I was like, you know, we could probably just delete that. Um, okay, so it looks like as we go through, there's nothing else in the table of contents that people are noted. Um, the links, so if you could go through, um, as you're under the school committee policy, we did this, I think, on the, but I'll put a link right now for the one for the Maynard, um, school committee policies or where you'd want to send families to for that, because that's, that link is not valid anymore. Uh, okay.
I'm happy, I'm happy to replace those links.
You got it? Okay, all right. Yeah, there's a note there, so awesome. Thank you very much. Um, and yeah, so that's one area that, under the district policies, we'll want to have that amended. Um, keep scrolling. Uh, same thing, Mary noted another place with the link, so it's in the, in the, in the comments, so you can update those. I am scrolling on page 10. Okay, uh, page 11. Mary, it's, it's a more of a grammatical or formatting thing, just Mary had it, so not substantive, but I think it's probably an easy fix to put it, um, bold in some fashion about the construction.
Agreed. And just separate, yeah, just have its own burger, because we had this conversation. That's my biggest fear this year, so.
Yeah.
Green Meadow.
Mary, we already, we sent information out today and will follow up once we have, um, our building committee meeting on Monday.
Thank you.
Great. Um, and then it looks like there's Mary's comment about the breakfast, and we've talked about that already on page 12. Um, uh, Mary had put a comment, is there a bike rack, um, at-
There is a bike rack. Will there still be a bike rack, Mary, after the access road? I don't know yet. Um, but there is currently, okay, there are two bike racks at the Crow Park.
Okay.
Parking lot location.
All right, so for now, looks like, it looks stays in there. Um, and something to revisit later. Okay, now we're going. All right, page 23. Um, I know Mary had two comments about this, but it's, um, about allowing or not allowing hats, visors, bandanas carried through to the other schools. Um, so Mary, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
No, I just, um, it, it was brought initially when we, when I was doing Fowler, that, you know, it's just not allowed in the hallways, but then when I get down to Green Meadow, not allowed at all, which is what I would prefer, because it seems as though, you know, that if we start the policy in Green Meadow and carry it through the Fowler, it's sort of like the cell phone policy.
Yep.
Um, it's easier to do that. It's, it's the, you know, it's the, it's how they should be acting, so that's, that's all.
So I, I think that's one of probably the themes I try to hear that we probably seeing as we're looking at all three of them, and I would probably pose that back to the leadership team for next year, you know, as, you know, as an opportunity to find like uniformity in, in some of those things, so that it doesn't feel new, or I think we're all probably saying the same thing, but, um, I think since we're a small town in Maynard, you know, families sometimes have kids in different schools, so they might not always understand the different policies that are a little bit different. So that would be, I would, uh, maybe a takeaway for updating for next year, um, just to get more alignment on, um, what the district approach may or may not be. Um, so Mary, do you feel like this is okay for now to leave it this way and then align?
Yeah, and like I say, it started with Fowler, so it was, uh, if anywhere it changes, it would be Fowler, because Green Meadow was already, is already educating the kids from an early age to, you know, what's appropriate, so.
Got it, got it. Um, okay, notice of suspension. Uh, this was-
Colleen has her hand up.
Oh, Colleen.
Just a time check.
Yep, I saw. I got, I got, I'm looking in there. Uh, notice of suspension. Um, so I had put, and this is probably one that's going to also carry over into the, um, Fowler middle school, um, is about giving oral or written notice for suspension, uh, the way it's worded, Karen, here. It just is, except for emergency removal, but later on, emergency removal actually does say, um, written, so I think if, I don't know if we can just delete that, you know, make it, but really, I think it should be all, you know, written or oral across the board. I don't know if that's a huge change for you, because it looks like it's outlined that way elsewhere. I just, um, it got stuck out a little confusing.
Natasha, I have no problem making that change again.
And it might be happening in practice anyway, so I just wanted to, you know, again, I'm hoping that's just more of a cleanup, um, piece, because it seemed a little bit, um, when I was reading below, it was like, I think it is in the emergency removal. Okay, um, this one is substantive, I think, for, for me, um, was about the in-school suspension. Um, and just for context, I, I know I know sometimes that a notice is not always given for in-school suspensions, um, I, you know, from my personal experience and also dealing with parents, but it's very, there's a very fine line there as far as when it's considered a suspension or not, and I know that we're not consistent necessarily in how we're applying that. Um, so if the child is like in the principal's office the whole day, and they're not with other peers, then that is considered a change in placement, and that should be given, a parent should have a notice for that. Um, it's if there, I just want to make sure, I don't know if we need to define that, because I don't know if everyone applies it the same. And putting my CPAC hat on, this is probably one of the biggest complaints we hear sometimes, is like, should I have gotten a letter for this? Should I not gotten a letter for this? And just people asking for that, and I, I just think it's something that we probably could work on to clarify. I'm a fan personally of just give notice, oral and written. I don't know if, you know, it's the like, unless you want to track that kid's time minute by minute, but the likelihood is they're going to stay in your office, and they're not going to be um, with the, their peers throughout the day, and they're probably going to miss their classes.
Um, yeah, so to be, if I'm going to be honest, like, this is not a policy that even feels like it's really, um, part of what happened at Green Meadow. I mean, it's here, I left it here because it was here and it, it is a district policy. I agree with you about the oral and the written, but it's not our practice at Green Meadow to keep a child out of their learning environment for an entire day.
Well, and, and that's, that's great to know. Um, I just know that it has been a disciplined approach that some principals have used in the past. It is within the, it is within the authority of principals to use it. I just want to make sure that when it comes to kids on like special needs in particular, it does count as one of those days, which the, if they're like a, leads to like a manifestation hearing, and, and I just want to make sure that they get their notice. Um, you know, if that's the case, that they're going to be there. So it's just, if you're not doing it in practice, like, then that's great. I just want to make sure the language, the language there is a little, you know, I would want to clean that up, so either way, again,
I agree with you.
The written oral notices in all cases, I think, would be probably the best, um, baseline if we, if that could be taken.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, so are, is that something that you're, you feel okay to kind of just tweak with just the written? Okay, great. So don't have to harp on that one. Anyone else have any questions on that? Any other question number? Nope, okay.
No.
All right, all right, and then I think we're getting toward the end.
There were a couple of policies that, that you just mentioned were outdated. There were a couple of policies that, that you just mentioned were outdated.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, so Hillary put on page thirty-six in the margins. You'll see um, where she indicated, um, she highlighted that for you, so.
So um, the medication piece and the allergy piece are replaced by the same um, JLCD. We don't have a, we didn't replace the five seventy with anything, because masks didn't have a policy on that. And it seems kind of out of date. It seems sort of like the HIV theory in the nineties. Um, and like the phone number there for the Department of Education AIDS HIV program, I'm not, I couldn't find anything on Desi about a HIV AIDS program.
I left that as it was. I figured I would get feedback on things that were outdated and not um, that didn't
We can take this as a, a cleanup for next year, that I think if
Adjust it in some way, because the policy, it's referring to a policy that doesn't exist.
No, 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 that part I'm saying, yeah, so the, the, the codifying the policy number or the changes to that, but as far as like the phone number for the program and what, I don't think we need to fix, like, find out what that phone number is and, and change it right now.
I think we should take out that whole HIV.
Yeah, we have, this whole part came from the policy and we got rid of the policy, and so it seems like this is linking, this is in here to be part, because it's our policy and it's no longer our policy.
Got it. So are we saying that, thank you, Hillary, for, and, and Mauro for clarifying that. So are we saying anything that says students with HIV infection, that whole section that we would want to remove?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Karen, do you have an issue with removing that? Like, I don't want to
I don't have any issue with removing it. I actually had our school nurse um, review this too, to see if there was anything that stood out to her. Um, but I, I'm happy to remove it.
Okay, all right. Well, then you know what? I am just gonna right now, there we go.
I think potentially if she has feelings about wanting something in there, it could be in there, but probably not this section.
Yeah, no, I, I, she didn't. Um, you know, we talked about things like the policy around lice. We don't send a child home for lice anymore. Um, so we removed that wording. Um, we talked more specifically around like what constitutes um, a child being healthy to return after being sent home. That's what we focused on, but these larger policies um, we did not, nobody was, was stuck to them.
Okay. All right. So then just kind of continuing on there, it looks like there's some more recodifying. Um, Hillary noted, uh, just to go through like the accident insurance. Um, so maybe um, we just take that out. It looks like Mauro is that we rescinded that policy, so we should take that out?
Um,
Just the policy number, right. Now leave the accident insurance, just eliminate the policy number.
Okay, so we're, it's not a policy anymore.
Yeah, maybe take out the Maynard School policy too, and I don't know.
Okay, all right. There we go. All right, so moving on, um, general information. Oh, I see, um, McKinney Bento um, exceptions. Hillary, you want to speak to this real quick?
Um, I just, I know that this was a problem, you know, when I registered my child like nine years ago, and then um, as recently as last year, a parent that was, um, went to register and registration was delayed for several days because um, they kept being told they needed all this documentation, and they were exempt from really needing that documentation, so I thought maybe mentioning it in there in some way um, could help clarify things.
If you have proof that you're exempt from needing the documentation, is that what you're asking for?
Um, or just say like, you know, the following documentation, the basic requirements, um, and like maybe say something like unless, you know, unless um, like due to McKinney Bento, a, a child may be registered without all the documentation, or whatever the wording is, we have a policy that talks about it, or um, to come up with like succinct wording, but basically to say that if they are, like if they're homeless or foster kids, um, they can register without that information.
Yes, I'm happy to add that wording. That makes sense to me.
All right, so we're gonna just, we're gonna, when we vote, we're gonna just give you the authority to update that section, Karen, um, post, so we're not holding up anything. Um, Mary is, had the notice of the breakfast thing there, so we're good. And then we're on page uh, forty-nine um, about, oh, the CPAC information. If you could update the CPAC information from their hours, um, there's, there uh, all of their information here. I'm just going to put the link um, in the chat, and then it has, does it have on here? Oh, yeah, it does have on here when they, um, although even that's actually outdated, but
Yeah, the website, the stuff that was on the website that we actually have linked to our newsletter every week, doesn't seem like that's up to date either.
It has like partial up to date on there. Um, actually, you know who, it's on, um, it's it's, it's the first Wednesday of each month, but it's actually twelve to one. So I think it's been in the smores for the mo, the most part, but it might be helpful if we just put a link. Um, and when the website gets updated. All right, there we go. I put the, the new link in there too. All right, so you can find a place for that. Um, and then I think that's really it's.
Okay.
Okay, so anybody else, any other thoughts on this? So it sounds like um, formatting that'll be for next year, um, aligning on all of the um, other things with regards to the head stuff and what's allowable, that'll be a revisit for next year. Um, you're going to update about the oral and written commu, uh, communications regarding all suspensions in school or out of school, and update the CPAC, and then the um, I think there's the deletion, all of those. So you're comfortable with the, the takeaways here that Karen, that we've talked about?
I am, absolutely, yep.
Great. Um, Alexis, it sounds like, are you good with us so far?
Yes, because some of the same questions that I had were already raised. Um, I looked at the document.
Okay, uh, Mary?
Yep, all good.
Okay, Hillary, yep.
Yeah.
Mauro? Okay, so I will make a motion that we approve the um, Green Meadow twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five handbook with edits and authorize Karen to make the substantive changes regarding the um, McKinney Bent, Bento and CPAC um, and other food meals as we've suggested.
Second.
Okay, roll call, or any other discussion? No, all right, Alexis?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
All right, Natasha, yes. Karen, thank you very much. Well, better than Liz, Liz took all the brunt of
I, I did want to say that, you know, I, I heard what you said about updating it to be more welcoming, and I think there's definitely other things that could be updated, but I read this one after the Fowler one, and it felt so much more welcoming than the Fowler one for, for little kids, and I really like, I think that you, the, you know, it's off to a good start in terms of being welcoming, like, it's not all discipline, it's, you know.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I do think like there are some redundancies, it feels like, but you know, it just I, I would, I would prefer to have some input from staff, from our school council, um, before making any big changes, um, but needed some more time to do that, obviously. Um, since not very many people were available in the month of July for consultation.
All right, so we have a whole year to have to make sure we get it right for next year.
Yeah, I was just going to make a recommendation that we do this so that, uh, everybody isn't under the gun, like, you know, if we can ask the three schools to have their updated ones, like even, I don't know, the end, I don't know, middle of July or something, because I'm feeling badly that we're throwing all this
And they need, they need to go through the, the policy subcommittee as well, so that's the other Yeah. That's really the channel, I think, that we would ideally want to see them go, because they are policy.
So that's a note for us.
Thank you, yes, yes, we're all learning. Um, okay, Fowler. Um, I think that some of these are going to be the same comments Keith, um, that we've, you know, shared earlier, so um, the font stuff, I, you know, same thing, you know, ideally it'd be great to just get it in a way that um, feels more consistent, but rather not focus more on the formatting issues and look at the more substantive pieces. Um, so just wanted to scroll on, um, Mary had a note on adding the superintendent letter. Looks like it's just missing here, so that would be um, the suggestion, um, and I think that that might be easy, but Keith, is I, are you able to do that?
Yeah, Natasha, thank you. Of course, um, you know, reading through this document, as you can see, it's very outdated.
Yep.
Um, just from multiple principals ago, um, you know, starting last year, certainly there were many other priorities before getting to this, so um, my assistant principal David and I, uh, really dove into this to kind of focus on areas that we needed, we knew needed immediate um, updating. Um, so all of these suggestions um, that the committee has made are point on, um, and very appreciated. Um, very doable, very realistic, um, you know, right down to the consistency of correct grammar. You know, sometimes some words were highlighted, sometimes they weren't, they weren't supposed to be, so all of that feedback is super critical and important, so thank you.
Okay, no, thank you.
One of the things I want to point out in, in, you know, high school has their language, Green Meadow has their language, and we talk about age appropriateness, um, and what's hard for the middle school, for me in my building, is that we're, we've got a mixture of both, right? We've got these really young elementary fourth graders, and then we've got these older eighth graders that are, you know, we're putting off to high school, so trying to find that balance. Um, it was, i- i- it could ultimately be challenging, um, and some of it might just be nuances, but um, certainly the feedback in terms of you know, like the CRA policy, um, absolutely. Um, and so I'll, I'll stop there and, and let you, you kind of go through when I can respond as appropriate.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. I think, and also I know this is like not an easy exercise, where we're all just kind of critiquing your stuff, so I just want to say thank you for, you know, Liz, and I know Karen had it signed off already, and, and Keith, because it's not intended to be that level. I think if we had more time, it would be something that would just feel more holistic. Um, so we're trying to get, make sure that you get what you need, and then we feel like we've covered um, as much basis as possible, so I'm just wanted to go ahead and start going through this particular one. Um, yeah, so just kind of updating the year, like even on the page two, just want, you know, some of those, you'll see the notes in the comments. Um, um, throughout, there is like things that related to prior principal um, and prior staff, so I think those are critical updates that we would want to make um, as well. Um, Mary had put a comment in the table of contents about adding calendar vaca, uh, vacation early release, similar, again, aligning um, to the other one. Um, Mary, I wonder is, doesn't, doesn't the Fowler calendar have that?
Yeah, because I checked on that, so
Yeah, yeah.
High schools did it differently. The high school just had it verbiage, and the, the elementary just, it had what we approved, which that would be easy for you to cut and paste, um, also Keith, if you just want to do that.
Sure.
Okay.
Probably just do that one.
Yeah. Um, the, um, and then just going through the, I noticed that the student conduct attend, it looks like it was, it's in the table, it just feels out of place, because it goes into this big paragraph. Um, and then it, um, so I wasn't sure if it was intended to be there, if it actually needed to go to page ten, because then it, it kind of goes into explanation about ways to consider, so just from that point. And um, there looked like there was some numbering, again, you will see notes, but the formatting where bullying was put in, it's missing something, so again, I don't want you to spend, I'd rather you look at the more substantive pieces and, you know, um, in general, but whatever you can update. Um, the school committee vision, I would just want to look to the school committee. Um, I personally have not actually seen this language and thought about this language in depth, and I would um, suggest that we take it out until we decide that we are, it just, I, I was reading, I was like, ooh, that's our vision. Um, and I
Yeah, it's also in the other two schools, though, so maybe we just leave it in for this year and that's, because it was in the high school and it wasn't elementary, so we have to go back to them, so maybe just
So, yeah, this will be a takeaway for next year, then, because we want to come up, I'd rather, yeah, I want to come up with something, but that's
A policy that's for the vision, and that's the one we sort of put on hold to see if we wanted to have like a joint workshop to work on the vision, or um, we've just left it as is for now, but it's something that we should update, because it's not current.
We can do that as a goal too, I think, because it should be with input as well. So we'll leave it, and then we'll update it for next year, since right now it's not a good one. Um,
You okay if I check that off and clear it out?
Yep, yep. Um, the other one is the same thing as earlier, the, the links, so if you want to just um, update the links in there, the ones, same thing, the Google, um, the policy links. Um, I had put in here about closing, it, you had just very specific about a two-hour delay, and I just was pointed out that I know Brian maybe just put delay opening, um, because Brian does one hour sometimes, and um, I know the students aren't excited about that, but
They request that now. No, they don't. I'm just kidding.
Well, I don't want them to get all excited, like, oh, we, we're always going to get two hours, and then you throw, you know, a cannonball in there, like, ha, ha. So let's just, yeah, let's set up expectations, like, it's, it could be any delay. Um, um, Mary had put a comment about uh, the common areas. I think this is also kind of related to that hat piece, and maybe for twenty, this is more of like looking forward, aligning for next year. Um, as well, um, oh, the cell phone. Um, I, I put comments in here. I know this is new for everybody a little bit, and I, I, I know that just in listening to one of the sessions, I only went to one, but I really felt it was important to emphasize how it's a partnership that we need parents to work with us on, and I thought if possible, some sentence that introduces that, like, we are looking to the reason why this is being instituted is to, you know, to promote, you know, a healthy well-being. I honestly might, you know, um, married to these words, I think it's just more the concept that we need parent or, you know, house partnership to what the actions are, and um, and since they're signing off on this handbook, I thought it would be a good, a good way to kind of emphasize. I, I don't know if you're, you're okay with something like that, um, but that would be my, I don't know if anyone in school committee has any thoughts or suggestions on, on that. No.
Okay, I think your suggestion is fantastic. I really do.
Oh, great. And then um, the other one was going down to um, just the infractions. You had four in there. I think you just take one out, you know, that's a lot of warnings. I think, you know, by the third, by the second one, you notify caregivers, you know, I don't, you know, this, this is a lot of work for admins and teachers to be, you know, keeping track of. I mean, caregivers really noted that, and then after that, they need to come, that was my suggestion. Um, I thought four was quite a bit to really escalate this before, and it's not a practice that I see in other schools, so I would say um, hopefully it doesn't get to that third one where parents have to come get it, but I think parents should be notified by the second one if it's becoming um, an issue. Hillary?
I'm not a fan of requiring parents to come to a meeting um, based on kids' behavior, because I think that's an unfair hardship for parents who can't get time off work, or don't have transportation, or have language differences with the administration, and it leads to unfair punishments, basically, based on the situation, the family situation.
Are you talking about earlier up in this?
No, it's for the third infraction, where you said like caregivers will be notified and must pick up the phone and attend a meeting with the administration. Um, I think that, you know, asking them for a meeting is okay, but I think requiring a meeting, um, based on a child's behavior can be really stress-inducing for a parent.
So they, I, I'm guessing they, I mean, it would be like, it doesn't, it could be remote, I'm guessing, but picking up the phone was, was there anyway, so they would have to be coming. It would just be more, again, trying to get that parent partnership when it comes to this particular aspect.
Yeah, but for some parents, requiring that partnership isn't something that they're able to do necessarily, and I think asking them to come pick it up and everything, and asking them to have a meeting, but I think when you say must, that sort of takes away or, you know,
Okay.
The understanding, like, you know, if, if they call a parent and a parent can't come, or they can't speak English, and it would be a hardship to, for the parent to try to coordinate, um, that it could just be unfair for that child compared to the children whose parents show up at school every day for pickup, and it's not a big deal to come in and meet.
Okay, um, does anyone else have any thoughts on, oh, on this? I'm fine with either way, honestly, it was just more, um, I thought four was a little much, and if we, you know, three, uh, I just think parents should be involved, or a caregiver should be earlier notified at, at the step two, um,
Keith, can I ask a question? What's going to happen after the third one, if there is a four? Keith, can I ask a question? What's going to happen after the third one, if there is a fourth? Or the kid is no longer allowed to have the phone in school at all after the third?
Oh, that's a really good question, um, you know.
That's where the caregiver would come in, it's like to let them know, oh, by the way, your kid is not going to be able to bring their phone back for the next semester or something like that.
Yeah, all right, so Keith, I think just to not get stuck too much on this one. Uh, it sounds like everyone's probably fine with if you can reduce it to three, you know, so not have the fourth. I don't know what the fourth, maybe we'll monitor, you know, we're gonna have to do that with the high school anyway. You know, like what are, how responsive, you know, are you having a lot of, and then, um, and then maybe go from there. Um, but because I think it'll be a ongoing conversation through the year anyway. And then to Hillary's feedback, I'm not, you know, set to, I just think that there needs to be an emphasis on a parent partnership. Um, or guardian partnership at a- a- as much as we can emphasize that. Because it it isn't something that I think we should fall solely on educators and administrators to solve. So that was.
Must, like if we change the word must in 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 some way, you know, make it so that there are exceptions based on the family. Um, I'm okay.
Okay, so I'll get rid of that and we'll ask, or the must. All right, and go back to, and we'll ask, here we go, you go with that?
Uh, now the grammar is a little wonky, but yeah.
Will be asked, right?
Yeah.
Okay. There we go. And.
Can I just ask the timeframe question? Are we, do we have a hard stop at seven? And I have another meeting.
Yeah, they can wait for us over a few minutes. They know we have a meeting right now, so. Um, I'd rather not keep them waiting too much, but, all right, um, are we good with this part?
Yes.
All right, dress code stuff, Mary, you talked about that already. Yep, um, Keith, a lot of just the same feedback as before. Policy um information in the um. In the side information, the notes for like re um codifying. Um, and I did have the same feedback for noticing, being given notice for any in-school or out-of-school suspension. I don't know if you have strong feelings about that. I I do, just because I think it covers. And just leaves less ambiguity to what a parent um should understand or take away. Um, any thoughts on that particular?
Yeah, I I think parents absolutely, caregiver should absolutely be notified regardless, no matter what.
Okay, okay, all right, great, so then we don't need to harp on that one too much. Um. And um, the hearing, you know, I have, I just didn't, I noticed in the talking about the suspension and the parent. It didn't talk about um, when your principal, like when you gave the, you know, your your ruling. So however you want to word that, I think that might just need to be in there, because then you go on to the next sentences as your decision is final. Um, but it doesn't say like anything about when you'll be giving the decision or how that decision. Um, you know, if it comes at the end or within twenty-four hours or whatever, so that would be my suggestion there, which it felt a little bit more. Um, substantive, and then.
I believe that's actually a legal obligation to have a written decision.
I think so too. I didn't want to say for sure because I know I've seen it other places, but I I also think you like the manifestation hearing, so there's a little different, there's different hearings. Um, and I wasn't really clear, but I thought, um, all right, and then going through, I I know that. Um, some of this is probably a little bit self-explanatory, um, again, same thing about the in-school and out-of-school. Um. Clarification there. Um, the sentence was about, it said, uh, no longer than ten days consecutive or a series of suspensions that are shorter than. I think it just means ten consecutive or concurrent. I think that was, so I just thought it would just kind of concise, um, there, there was a sentence there that was, looked a little redundant, the one that I had Xed out. Um, on page nineteen. Um, and then just throughout, I know Mauro had this feedback, a feedback you had put team. I think that was implying an IEP team throughout, because it's not really clarified earlier. Um, so throughout, if you're able to just look at that piece and just if there, if it's the IEP team, because I know that's more. Um, people more familiar with with that terminology is if they're on an IEP. Um, parents who don't have an IEP for their kid, they might not understand what team means. Um, so that was my thought, suggestion there.
Absolutely.
And then continuing on. Um, oh, looks like there's, yep, some more feedback on um twenty, page twenty-three about policy updating. So I'll leave that to you to to do.
So, um, Keith, that on that, the tobacco, um, smoking, that the GBED. That's for um staff. So knowing that this is a student handbook, maybe we don't include that one, but ADC and JICH um can be included in there.
Should you mention, what's that first um code that you referred to?
Um, GBED, you know, I'll just, I'll just make a note in here.
Yeah, you want to just change or edit or, yeah, great, Mauro, okay. Um, the next section that's kind of substantive, it's rela- relating to that CRA language. Um, and I I think that it looks like, you know, you had some questions there just hearing tonight. I would just say, if there's any way you just take the feedback that we had, you know, incorporated for the other ones, I'm hoping and just make it. You know, age appropriate, but the way it's laid out here, uh, it just feels that it sounds, it's just not enough, especially what due to legal implications.
This paragraph is different than what you're talking about, like you're talking, like, there's another section later on that's talking about CRAs for attendance. And that should ideally match the other schools. This paragraph is talking about if a child is um using substances. And the school administration doesn't feel the parents or guardians are following the recommendations of the school for treating the substance use disorder. Um, they will file a CRA, so this is, like, actually, this this is sep- this is different, this is not in either Green Meadow or the high schools. Um. And he, I think, um, Keith is saying about removing that, because if the parent, really, the parents don't have to follow the recommendations of the school. With regards to a tr- a treatment, they can't be neglectful, and if they were neglectful, that would fall under the normal fifty-one A process anyway.
Right. That's what I was not sure about here, though, because this isn't, I don't, um. Go ahead, Keith, sorry.
Right, um, so what I was thinking here is keeping this language, but changing it from a CRA to a fifty-one A.
I'm not really comfortable saying that if a parent doesn't follow the recommendations of the school, a fifty-one A would be filed. Because they don't have, like, the school's not the expert on treating substance use disorders, you know, like the child's doctor, their therapist. Like, there's a lot of other people who may be having conflicting recommendations. Um, I think it's more if this parents aren't treating the substance use disorder or aren't doing anything. Like, if the parents are being neglectful, then filing a fifty-one A, but I don't think saying if the parents and guardians are not following the recommendations of the school. Is necessary where that, like, you don't file a fifty-one A because they're not listening to the school, it's if they're actually neglecting the child.
So is the, is it, is it maybe clear to say if at any time the school administration feels that there is child neglect? Right? That's really what it would be, that the school would take appropriate and do the fifty-one. A, is that what we're?
I think in a situation like that, this paragraph could almost just come out, because we're legally obligated to file up fifty-one A. We suspect neglect anyways, so.
It's kind of, okay.
That would be my suggestion.
Okay, yeah, because the other area has the CRA. Okay, great, thank you. All right, um. Other contact information, um, numbering convention, uh. Oh, I put in here, I took, I saw that um Heather had emailed you and I about that section about the bullying in here. So I just put that in the, um, I put that in there, so you may just be able to just accept that. But it was her, with her feedback on the right language to incorporate.
Just so I know what you're talking, what you're talking about under the preventive bullying section?
Yeah, exactly, that you had put a question there about, does this look right? And um, and we had a little bit back and forth, and I I know she emailed outside, so I just copied her, her email language of what she recommended. And then I I scratched out that one section and I put, I put what as, in addition, students who have disabilities, that social skills, all that's. Um, her, her verbiage that she sent us in an email.
Gotcha, perfect, thank you.
Okay, um. All right, I know it's seven o'clock right now, um, so going through, I think it just, there's some um questions about consistency. And uh, language. Um, the CRA piece, this is where it's kind of in step nine. Um, Hillary, I think this is where we would want to see, um.
I feel like maybe just taking the whole section, like this whole section from the high school one and putting it here. If if that's consistent with what would be done at Fowler, um, or in some way talk about how the CRA is a last resort. Um, and, you know, all the thi- like the things that would, everything else would come first, um.
But would we, would we say that we would, we would want to, um. Where age appropriate, um, use the language provided, um, or previously recommended for the high school? Is that, is that the school committee, everybody else feel okay with that? Yep, okay, Keith, does that sound okay with you? Don't have to go into, might be some simple cut and paste for you as well. Liz, thank you for working that out with us. And and taking a bullet for the team for everybody else. Okay, um. And just going on, some of the other things, we, you know, alignment, we're just going to have to revisit next year. Hillary has some information about re- policy again on page thirty-one, thirty-two. Um, formatting, Mauro has a question on why honor roll was highlighted. Um, so maybe you can, yeah, think about how, if we don't do an honor roll, we don't do an honor roll, we used to do an honor roll.
So we don't, it it doesn't show up in the chi- students transcripts.
Oh, I thought that's a conversation then for the next, for the next year's handbook.
Going to the Beacon Villager, and it was, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
No, I think that's a really good conversation to have, but it it's out of place. Started, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So take it out for now, you, are you, are we saying?
If if it's not happening, and then I would say we should take it out, I would say otherwise it leaves parents to think about, there's an honor roll that if it doesn't exist and doesn't exist. Rather be thoughtful about it, um, and if you're comfortable taking it out. And then, um, yeah, contact information on uh subsequent pages and policy. Um, information, I think that's the majority of everything else, I'm just going through. Um. Looks like Mr. Kozak updated some information. Um, oh, the athletic section, this was the other area, um. Uh, there was some misalignment. I I I put comments in there, I think really, if you're able to either look at the handbook, that parents, like the student athlete handbook. Um, you know, Mike did a great job, and he shared that with families already, so I'd really want to be as much in alignment as we can again with that. But the, the area in particular, um. Was about the eligibility, that I think that's more critical about getting, uh, because he talks about eligibility. Um, for programs, and they're very, it was very clear. Um, and it, it, this one says just students aren't unsatisfactory or in areas of effort, seditions. It wasn't definitely, it was not worded that way, it was more about core, core content, you know, you miss, you fail one or however. So I don't know the right way to approach that, but it it did feel different than what he was sharing with families.
Would you be comfortable with me taking out the language, leaving the heading? And just putting a introductory paragraph saying please refer to and provide the link to the.
If you're able to do that as opposed to keeping it whole in two places, I save yourself and and doing that. Uh, I don't know, I would be okay with that, I don't know if anyone else in the school committee would be fine.
Yeah, depending on what part you take out, if you leave in the piece about required to fill, fill the activity fee requirement to participate. Can you include something about um no child being denied the opportunity to participate for financial reasons?
So just a quick par- a quick paragraph, no child will be, and I'll I'll craft it up. Um, and then just put the link to the handbook, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yeah, I think that sounds as much, yeah, save yourself the heartache, so you're not having to, because as a update, I let him update it, you just say like here.
My fear is it'll, it'll end up adding more, like multiple more pages to the document.
Right, right, yeah, and that's exactly kind of when I went, was going through even like to the the chemical um parts on the next section. You know, he goes through that whole section, and it's a little bit more updated on, I think the policy, um, you know, it expands. I put it in the comments, um, but, and you maybe, you may want to keep it there, but I just put in the comments, because there, there are some tweaks, it's been updated a little bit. Um, like one thing, um, it just, it says about, um. Like, like, um, oh, this is not a violation for students to possession for any legally defined drug substances for their students' own use. By their, that's prescribed by their doctor, and that was omitted by what you had, but it was in the the updated policy that, you know, Mike had shared. So I just would look to see, I put it in the comments, if you want to consider um how that whole, that would be my suggestion. Either put it exactly there, how, you know, word for word, because I think you tried to copy and paste that, but it's, um, it's not comprehensive. And it's.
This was here prior to me.
I I, I got it.
Uh, I just wanted to clarify, the piece about not um denying a child ability to participate for financial reasons. Only if you, it only if the sentence saying they're required to pay stays in there. So if you take that part out in addition to all the other pieces, um, and link to the athletic handbook, then you don't need to add that sentence. It's just if you have that line in there.
Perfect, thanks, Hillary.
Okay, and then some of the other things I think are pretty self-explanatory, just contact information about, um, the, um. About your student records is contact the the guidance office, I, you know, I think you put a comment, you know, I think you were going to update that. Because I didn't think it was a contact, the guidance office that, to get information about prior questions about child student records.
Yeah, the language is principal or designee, so.
Yeah, that sounded about right.
Changing it to that would be more appropriate.
Yeah.
Although the conflict, designate, but just keeping it blank generally.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, and I think that's, that's all, everything else is just the IEP stuff. Um, like, you know, team, just to expand on, you know, where you have team just to do, so.
Yep.
Um, are you okay with those suggestions?
Yeah, they're, they're honestly, they're all fantastic, um, when I look through these, it it was, it all made perfect sense.
Okay, all right, um, so is anybody else, Mary, have any other questions?
Just the, well, adding the wellness policy that Liz is going to send you, and also the same language that Colleen is going to send you. About the free and re, um, you know, the free breakfast and lunch for everybody for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five would be my only other.
Yeah, so just, just to recap, because I I took some notes while we were talking, you know. Um, the universal breakfast, like Mary, you just said, add the calendar for the release date, we talked about, get that right from either high school. Um, the wellness policy, you'll get that from the high school. Um, suspensions and emerg- emergency removal. Um, I just took a note for that, um, and Karen, I had a quick question, Karen had something in there about the CPAC. Um, I think that would be important to get in.
Yeah, yeah, if you, I mean, again, I would say. Yeah, yeah, anything you can put, but don't, you know, certainly something we'll add for next year to make sure that all of that, those kind of core things are uh consistent throughout each school. Because I, especially, yeah, the LPAC as well, great, great point. Um, Mauro, anything on this, anything else?
Um, no, I don't have anything else, I, but I did just want to remind all three, so Liz, Karen and Keith. Um, to, once you've made all your changes, please make sure that you go through the table of contents and make sure that all the, the. Page numbers are are correct, because I'm sure that there's going to be some shuffling around, and I know that that's probably one of the last things. That is kind of.
Yeah, this will be what Mauro loses sleep over, okay?
I know.
Fair point, though, it really is.
It is, it is, it is, um, Hillary?
Um, my only comment is, I noticed that when, um, when you send out the samurais and the letters and everything. With your tone, it's a lot more welcoming than this, this tone in this um handbook sounds a lot like, more like former administrators. So, um, although it's not a priority, I think that, I I think that the tone that you write, when you write yourself, um, sounds so much more welcoming. And so if, like, over the course of the next couple year or so, um, when you put your own spin on things. I think that that will really um help make things more consistent with how they actually are in real life at the school. Um. Sound more positive.
Awesome, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Alexis?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, um.
Um, Keith, just for clarification, I think with the calendar, I would go to, not the high school, because they didn't have the, it it's easier to go with Green Meadow. Because they just had the calendar laid out, easy versus the high school one.
Perfect, thank you for that correction.
Okay, all right, so I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve the Fowler. Uh, student handbook for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year with um edits as we've stated. with, um, edits as we've stated, so that would be, you've noted them all, um, and any further discussion? Okay, roll call, Alexis?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Natasha, yes. Alright, Keith, thank you so much, thank you, Liz. Yes, thank you, Karen, okay, um, school committee, so I, we are over, and Mary and I do need to go. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to just send an email, because the prior author, I was just doing this as a nice to kind of do, uh, because I wanted to get your vote on it, but, um, the feedback that I got from bond counsel, that's pretty kind of non-negotiable anyway. I just wanted to show that in there, um, and I need to incorporate, Mary and I went to CPC last night. Um, and it was not the best meeting, um, outcome that we would want, but there's been a lot of feedback during this week. So essentially, our application will, will not be looked at until after town meeting. Um, there were two members who were not there, so I would say the, you know, the CPC funds are, um, questionable at this point, because now they're like, no bleachers, maybe no bathroom, um, so that's still quite up in the air, um, with that. And the comments, uh, that came out, uh, this week, I just also wanted, because I need to actually put this in a spreadsheet, um, was about the coding updates, and that's something I haven't had a chance to put in, um, a spreadsheet like in one place, because of, to outline what the cost would be each year for if you were to do rental, and why the rental, um, you would still need a purchase, like, that still doesn't solve the curb and the ADA access, the hand sinks and all the other pieces. So that's the other thing that came up from this week from feedback from the FinCom, and, um, was talked about also last night at CPC. So that is, I think, a number that we need to get our hands around to demonstrate, and I don't have what exactly that number is. Roughly, the FinCom, Peter was, he calculated, um, was like, if it, even if it was like fifty-five thousand, going up five percent escalation over fifteen years, it was like six million dollars. So it was, it was more than the project, the project will be paid off in four years, and a long-term rental, um, in fifteen years. Uh, I mean, the project will be paid off in fifteen years, and a long-term rental of fifteen years will pay more, and we still won't have anything, um, that's really improved. So if everyone's okay, I'll just do those updates, I'll circulate them. Um, and then I, I already have the authority, unless everyone has objects to needing to stay later to do this tonight.
All good.
Okay, Alexis, you're good with that?
Yep, all good.
Okay, Hillary?
Yep.
Okay, um, oh, me and Mary, okay, alright, great, so then I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Okay, um, roll call, Alexis?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Natasha, yes, alright, Brian, Colleen, everybody, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, phew, man, that was speedy, okay, bye.